I'm gonna call the meeting to order, we're gonna state the pledge of allegiance, and then I will turn it over to Courtney Gilbert.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Can you all hear me out here? You guys can all kind of circle around if you want. We'll swear in our new officials for the next four years, and I'll go first so that I can swear all of you in.
Teresa, I'll have.
I get to swear.
Swearing in, not swearing out.
Yeah, I sent them all an email today. Expect his group pictures. Ready?
I guess.
Here we go.
Raise your right hand. Pete, after me. Aye, Courtney P. Gilbert.
Aye, Courtney P. Gilbert.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That you will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of Gary County Clerk, so help you God.
And faithfully discharge the duties as the Gary County Clerk, so help me God.
I just said that because Teresa hates hugs. Yes, you couldn't turn me down in front of a group of people.
So next, we have Keith Asher. Are you ready?
Yeah.
All right, ready? Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Keith W. Asher.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That you will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
As Gary County Commissioner, District Three.
As Gary County Commissioner, District Three.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Next, we have Kathy Tremont, County Commissioner, District Two. Let me raise your right hand.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kathy Tremont.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That you will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
As Gary County Commissioner, District Two.
As Gary County Commissioner, District Two.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, next, we have Jackie Risingberg, Register of Deeds.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jackie Risingberg.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That you will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
As the Gary County Register of Deeds.
As the Gary County Register of Deeds.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Krista. All right, you ready?
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Krista Elblaisel.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That you will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
As the Gary County Attorney.
As the Gary County Attorney.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Nathan J. Beckman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly affirm. Swear or affirm, sorry.
That you will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
As the Gary County Sheriff.
As the Gary County Sheriff.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All of you officials, I'll get you your original back after I make a photocopy of them. That is all of our officials.
We have some time if you wanted to take pictures. If we have about 20 minutes, if you guys want to take pictures by the flag.
Yeah, with family or.
You're more than welcome.
Do we want the group photo of all the officials too?
Yeah. Why don't you guys all take out together? And if you guys want to do with family and friends, that's fine. It's just my, I have this kind of layer. Yeah. Just sort of like I should do now, right? Yeah. There we go. It's okay with getting with the owl. I just got it to work. I'm scared. Took me 20 minutes to figure it out. I'll try not to. You guys don't break it. We're closing the, their range is wanting to be closed, please just open it up. Oh, okay.
Okay, so family friends, if you guys want to take pictures.
Watch out, watch out, watch out. God, you guys are trying to get me. Okay, Henry. Janie.
Hi. Oh, my God. Yes. I'll quit bothering you. Just because we had so much. Oh, do you too? Sometimes. Yeah. I'm taking you off. Sitting around, trying to stay. I know. Commissioner Tremont brought donuts, so if anybody's hungry, come to some of these donuts. Oh, my gosh. Yes, next to you.
Hey, I know. Don't worry about that.
I have to drive her. Am I gonna bring the coat? Yeah, I'll bring it over. I'll get it. Okay, that's gonna be between you guys. Yeah. All right, are we ready? Next up is our reorganization of the election. And I'll turn it back over to Courtney Gilbert again.
Welcome, everyone, again. We will call the reorganization of the Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. It is 10:20 AM. Now, I will accept nominations for Chairman of the County Commissioner.
I move that Commissioner Asher be elected to Chair for the Gary County for 2025.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. I will now take nominations for Vice Chair for 2025.
I'll make a motion to nominate Kathy for Vice Chair.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries. I will now take nominations for Secretary for 2025.
I move the Commissioners to work on that.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's the easy one.
We gotta take minutes now.
Luckily, Trish does a lot.
Thank you.
All right, I will now take nominations to be appointed to the Public Building Commission for 2025.
Would you like to stand?
So, Trish. You're nominated, Keith, okay.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, I will now accept nominations to be appointed to the EDC for 2025.
Do you like that? Okay, I'll do it then.
I nominate Trish for that.
Kathy, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, accepting nominations to be appointed to the Military Affairs for 2025.
I'll make a motion for Commissioner Asher to serve on that committee.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Accepting nominations to be appointed to Solid Waste Management Planning Committee for 2025.
Is that something you'd like to do again? I'll nominate him.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Nominations to be appointed to the North Central Kansas Regional Juvenile Detention Center Board for 2025.
I'm unable to serve on that again, so if one of you two would.
Kathy.
Yeah, I'll be Kathy.
I nominate Kathy for that.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Nominations to be appointed to Adibus Committee for 2025.
I'll go on that, so I'll stay on there if nobody else wants it.
I'll make a motion for Commissioner Giordano to serve on the Adibus Committee for 2025.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Nominations to be appointed to the County's Risk Management Committee for 2025.
I would nominate Kathy for that.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Nominations to be appointed to the County's Local Emergency Planning Committee for 2025.
I think they don't. Would you want to do that?
Yeah, I will do that, yes. Is that with Gary Burgess?
One meeting to you.
And don't be late.
Yeah.
Kathy. Keith, you're moving that.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Nominations to be appointed to the Junction City Area Chamber of Commerce Board for 2025.
I'd make a motion for Kathy.
Yes.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to be appointed to, sorry, nominations to be appointed to the Flint Hills Regional Council for 2025.
I would like to stay on that, please.
Yep.
I'll make a motion for Commissioner Giordano to stay on the Flint Hills Regional Council for 2025.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, nomination to be appointed to the MPO and an alternate for 2025.
I'd still want to.
I'd nominate Commissioner Asher for the MPO.
And a second. Who would be your alternate delegate?
I can do that.
Trish for second, okay. Kathy, do you second that motion?
Yes, I'd second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Nomination to be appointed to Heartland Works for 2025.
I would nominate Kathy for that.
Yes, I second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Nomination to be appointed to the CBB Board for 2025.
I think that's your turn, Keith. Nominate you.
Kathy, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We need a motion to name Junction City the Daily Union Official Paper for 2025.
I'll make a motion to name the Daily Union the Official Paper for 2025, and to look for other alternatives for 2026, future years.
Why second that? I'm not sure. I want to look for alternatives because I think we would be making our constituents have to get two different papers for public stuff if we're gonna give the city and the school district or, I mean, that's something we can talk about next year. So I'm only gonna second the motion of us for this year, yeah. And we can talk about it next year.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Need a nomination to name Central National Bank as the official depository for the county. Trish, moving, is there a second?
Second.
Keith, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that is all I have, because you'll handle the G A A C with ownership.
Yes, but we need to have a, we need to PBC.
PBC, oh, we did that.
Keith, Ken Mortensen.
No, they need to redo three members.
Oh, 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 okay.
No, two, the PBC.
Are you at PBC, but we do need to do something with the 911?
Yes, we do. But we can put that on the agenda for discussion later on. Do you want to, is that all right? Just because there's some issues that we need to talk about.
So you don't want to do that right now?
The 911 board.
Oh, 911 board, okay, so.
Rodney Kletner and Mike Rhodes need to be appointed to the EDC.
Okay.
Because he's already done it for this.
All right, so we do need a motion to. All right, so we do need a motion to appoint Ken Mortensen, Rodney Glessner, and Mike Rhodes to continue on the P B C board.
I'm going to second that and just to, just because they have been on here and with us moving forward with the new trying to figure out what we're going to do with the jail, I'd really like to have their knowledge and expertise on that, so that's, that's the reason why I'm seconding that.
Okay.
Who was the third one, John Moy?
Mike Rhodes.
Mike Rhodes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do we need to do the gap waiver?
Finance director will do that. So that concludes all I have as far as the organization. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not the chair anymore, so.
Here, I'll move you.
I would just say I'm getting ready to call Tammy up, but I'm not the chair anymore.
Okay, so that's it, we have the business at hand. Next item on the agenda is discussion of salaries for new elected officials. And I don't know how you want to handle this.
Yeah, we do recommend donations from the H R and finance. With the past history, can we present your information for you to consider?
All right, good morning, Commissioner Crystal Malchos, Director of Human Resources Special Projects. Glad to be here today. The information being shared with you is regarding the setting of the pay for our new elected officials, which includes Ms. Tremont and that's not Bookman, Beckman, correct? Sheriff Beckman. We have a recommendation, but first I'd like to, for edification of all those in attendance and watching, back in 2022, the commission authorized and had a wage study conducted by the Arnold Group, out of which Top Kansas. They did a very in-depth study and created a step grade and scale and placed positions on that scale based on the requirements of the position, the knowledge, skills, abilities, the essential functions. And then the different people were placed on that scale based on their education and experience. With that, the duties are looked at, the requirements for the position. And with each individual position being reviewed, they are compared with like positions. Totally unbiased, Mr. Hayes did not interview each individual person, so nobody's performance was taken into consideration, nobody's attitude or behavior, et cetera, totally unbiased. With that, we do have a recommendation for the sheriff to come in at grade forty-one P with a step of H. That takes into consideration his relevant experience in law enforcement, his supervisory roles, his academic achievements and specialized training. And this was discussed with our consultant as to where to place him.
What was the previous sheriff?
Forty-one P C.
Which was?
He would have been a D this coming in twenty-five.
So forty-four.
You've got the pay scale in front of you.
At one fifteen. One fifteen.
I'd say the annual's on the other side.
And you said what, forty-one what?
Step H.
Which is one twenty-nine, six oh four.
Correct.
Is that?
Are any of us able to see the qualifications or, you know, what the rationale rationale is in setting him? And I believe that he probably needs to be started at the beginning of that range.
Well, unfortunately, the commission set a precedent when the county clerk was put into office a couple of years back to not start at the minimum. And we, the Director of Finance and I, advised the commission at that time that by not setting somebody with no public sector experience, et cetera, by not setting her at the minimum, that they were creating a precedent on how to treat elected officials coming in. And basically, she was, the minimum was sixty-five and they started her at seventy-two, which is basically a step D. So in consulting with our commission, with our consultant and visiting with him, basically now the commission has set for elected officials step D as the new minimum. So with our incoming sheriff having relevant experience, education, everything going on, then he would start at the H. And this was based upon our consultant.
I just had a little bit of problem with that because our current sheriff that has been in and has had experience is making one hundred and fifteen thousand. So that's quite a, a bit more than, so.
Maybe we can have Sheriff Beckman tell us about his experience.
Would you like that?
I would love to. I prepared a presentation. I can do it up there, but I also have a package you can read through. For the members of the public, feel free to pass that around too. If you want to open up to the second page of the packet that I handed out, this is a history that was sufficient for this job, in my opinion. I was a full-time correctional officer in Nemaha County back in two thousand. That's where my first career started in law enforcement. I actually have a full-time experience operating a jail or working in a jail. So I know the operations of a jail, that gives me a benefit there. Moving on to the school history, I graduated from K State University in two thousand and two with a bachelor's science degree. Moving on to twenty oh three, when I was hired at the Riley County Police Department. And I just want to explain the unique situation with the Riley County Police Department. We are a sheriff department and we are a police department. No one else in Kansas can say that, it's a very unique situation because I handle everything the sheriff department handles, as well as the P D. We sell, we serve civil paperwork, we operate in the jail, we have policy on all the above. It's a very unique situation, so just keep that in mind as I go through the presentation. I was on patrol from two thousand and three to two thousand and eleven. I became a police training officer in oh nine and did that for three years, I trained all new recruits coming in. In two thousand and eleven, I transferred to Investigations and I was involved in the Special Investigations Unit from eleven to two thousand and fourteen. I went back to patrol for a year, came back to Investigations again in two thousand and fifteen. At that time, I was a member of the Repeat offender Program. The Emergency Response Unit, same thing as a SWAT team, I was on that from two thousand and six to two thousand and eighteen during this timeframe. I became a supervisor in two thousand and seventeen on patrol. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, I transferred back to Investigations for a third time. And I was a supervisor at the Criminal Tellis Unit and overseeing all investigations that came through the investigation side. When I put in for lieutenant, that was the first time I ever put in, that was at the end of two thousand and twenty-four. I made the list and I was on the fast track to be lieutenant in twenty twenty-five, but I chose to run for sheriff instead. Important factors to consider or compare versus my predecessor, the previous interim sheriff. I worked in a jail, he has never worked in a jail full-time. I have a bachelor's degree, he does not. I have had crisis intervention certification, that was one of his goals, if you guys followed his campaign. I am certified in that, we've done that for years, I can bring that in right away, that's not a goal, that's something I can implement right away. Hundreds of others have leadership school. Just to give you a few examples, Leadership in a New Age, KSU's Daily School of Leadership, Problem Oriented Policing Conference. And that's a very unique conference, that's worldwide. So I got to meet with worldwide leaders from all sorts of different countries to intervene with them and discuss different ways of law enforcement. I have attended all three of the institutes of the sheriff or supervisor, command and executive. So to break that down, the supervisor is first line, I graduated from that. Command is what it says, command staff, and then executive would be for chief and sheriffs, and I completed that. And then what's really unique is the sheriff's school, it's only every four years, the interim sheriff never attended that, I did. If you follow once again the interim sheriff's goals, accreditation experience, or accreditation was, something was a goal of his. It's actually a goal of mine as well, but we've been doing that for decades over at Riley County, so bringing that accreditation here is going to be a very easy thing to do. Matter of fact, the sheriff department reaches out to Riley County for advice and guidance, and I bring that with me now. I have worked at a sheriff department longer than my predecessor, he was hired at Gary County in oh nine, I've been hired since oh three at the sheriff department slash P D because it's both, we do both jobs. I want to go into some experience between working at Riley County compared to working at Gary County. You're never going to be able to understand the difference, but I'm going to try to explain it to you the best I can on what I am disposed to and experiences I you know, take in being at Riley County. There's quite a bit of difference. Want to flip to your next page? I'll briefly touch on the difference between Gary County, what their supervisors receive compared to what Riley County supervisors receive. And this is not a slap in the face of Gary County by any means, it's just to show everyone why most likely the consultant said what he said, based off of my opinion too. I'm going to present that. So Gary County is your first box at the top there on the packet, Riley County is the bottom box. Calls for service in a, just so you guys understand, I pulled these numbers first of this number, so these will be January to November with the projected numbers. So calls for service at Gary County are fourteen thousand eight hundred roughly. Calls for Riley County per year are forty-seven thousand seven hundred roughly. So obviously we can see the exposure that I will receive compared to my predecessor. Cases pulled in twenty twenty-four at Gary County were roughly a thousand. Cases pulled in Riley County are roughly six thousand. So as I mentioned earlier, the last four years was investigations, I am reviewing five thousand more cases. Legitimate cases, not calls for service, but actually cases pulled than my predecessor would have reviewed, being the supervisor of investigations. And I did some projected calls for service and projected cases, if you guys have the packet, you can see that, but I've already established the difference on what I'm supposed to, being at a larger agency. And the experience that I can gain and bring here. Flipping to the next page, I thought it was important not only to compare myself to my predecessor, but as well as another county that is very comparable. That county is Potawatomi County, they're in the northeast region, similar to we, what we are. Population is similar and employees and whatnot is similar. So if you guys have that in front of you, you can see the population for twenty twenty-four. And Gary County was estimated at thirty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-five. Potawatomi County is estimated at twenty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-two. That's eight thousand plus different on population in favor of Gary County. Number of employees for your average for Gary County was one oh four. Four-year average for Pot County, Potawatomi County is sixty-three. Moving on to jail bed capacity, our jail is documented to have a hundred and sixty beds, there is documented to have sixty-seven beds. We are operating on an average daily population in the jail in Gary County, a hundred and one. Now I was told that number might be off a little bit, but that was from the major. I was told that ninety-nine was the average when we determined, so we asked the major to provide these numbers and it was actually like ninety-nine or something like that. So a little bit lower than what he initially told me, one oh one. Potawatomi County, their daily operation for jail inmates is twenty-two. That's five times more inmates here in our jail, and our jail is much bigger. The budget is roughly nine point three million, sheriff office budget for Gary County. The budget for Pot County is roughly five point one million. So if we flip to the next page, the reason I think that's important is now I want to talk about the salary of the interim sheriff, Mr. Kaufman. It was set at one fifteen, hundred fifteen thousand one hundred and sixty-nine and sixty cents. If you compare that to the sheriff at Potawatomi County and the sheriff, or the undersheriff at Potawatomi County. The sheriff at Potawatomi County was making one hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-three. And I'm going to remind you, that is a much smaller department and lower population. Do I think Mr. Kaufman or previous sheriffs were underpaid? Yes, I do. The undersheriff was making the same amount in Pot County as our interim sheriff here. Doesn't make sense to me because we have more population and we have a way bigger jail, which is a huge liability, that's where all of our lawsuits for the county comes into play. If we're going to get sued as a county, me and you three, it's going to be because of the jail. So I think that's very important, and I think our previous predecessors were very underpaid. Now with that being said, you've got to take into consideration, I have college degree, and we're going to talk about that. The U S Bureau of Labor Statistics, this is something that's on the federal website, you all can go look at it. An individual with a bachelor's degree earns on average more than twenty-seven thousand annually compared to an individual with a high school diploma. And my predecessor, that's what he had, I have a four-year degree. A person with a bachelor's degree earns more than eight thousand annually versus an individual with an associate degree, so a two-year degree. So those are some numbers I thought were very relevant to this conversation, so I wanted to present that. Based off of my own personal opinion, college education, the sheriff's school, the experiences from Riley County, comparisons to the interim previous predecessor, Potawatomi County Sheriff. I was going to ask for a hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-four, which is, I believe, I, so one step above H. But according to the consultant, the professional consultant, he had me starting negotiations of one twenty-nine. So that's my presentation, and I would be more willing to answer any questions that you may have from, from me.
Thanks for the information, appreciate it.
I do have just a couple of things that I'd like to add to that. If I may, Chairman. So I did hand out a sheet and it does show you the grade and steps and it does show you these for our elected officials. So Crystal touched on this when she said that the clerk came in at a D with no experience as a clerk or an election officer or in government, but she had a little bit of management experience. And when we set the register of deeds salary, we took that same, same consideration. So with the register of deed, she had not only experience as a deputy, but five years in government as well. And so in looking at that, she would have originally been looked at as a B to a C. And in taking what we did in consideration of the clerk, she was placed at an F on her scale. And then when you look at the treasurer and the thing about this one is if we're going to compare to the previous treasurer, she should have come in at the level the previous treasurer went out based on experience level. But she didn't, she was set clear back at seventy-three thousand, which would have been equivalent to an E. After we did that twenty-three wage study, it was realized she was put way lower than she should have been. And she got adjusted up to the K because of that, to put her where she should be. And then probably the most relevant in looking at this with the sheriff coming in, because a sheriff position is very specialized, as is the attorney position. And we had an attorney come in, she had extensive legal experience, she had governmental experience from the city. And she was placed at basically a G. So when you look at that, you can. So when you look at that, you can't just automatically assume, when you have a professional level person, that they should go at that bottom step. You have to look at the relevance of their experience, their education, and the skills that they bring to the table when you set that salary. So if you take it in comparison to where the attorney was set, the H is very valid based on the qualifications of the sheriff coming in. And I would just like to point one thing out on the sheriff that left. He never came and had this discussion with us when his salary was set. Had he done that, we would have done the same consideration, the same study with our consultant in bringing you a number in what we thought was realistic for him to come in at. But that was done on his own, and it was outside HR, outside budget, outside finance. So we didn't have any say-so at all in coming to you and asking for a step placement in that position.
Thank you.
And when our clerk, I don't remember when our clerk came in, and, you know, she does not have experience as far as, and she did not have any experience as far as the clerk, and he even recommended fifteen thousand dollars more than what the consultant had. And we compromised because she does have leadership experience, and she was coming in to fix some issues that were there.
As a reminder for that discussion, I did go back to that meeting, we got the minutes from that, so pages eight to ten will refresh the memories, I hope. Ms. Tremont was there as a concerned citizen, so this hopefully won't be new to any of you up there, but this is a reminder of the discussion that we did have at that time, when we did advise that she be placed at the minimum, but the commission decided to allow her higher than the minimum. So I would ask that the same considerations be taken, be taken under review before setting the salary for our sheriff. I would also like to remind the commission that you adopted the pay policy that was provided by the Arnold Group, and it included such things as the sheriff pointed out, such as if the position does not require a degree, but the person coming in has one, that will be considered as one step. So he automatically gets a step just for having a degree that wasn't required for the position, but is relevant to the position.
I feel our, our law enforcement, both city and the county, have been well underpaid for what they have been doing. I speak from experience, but I, you know, Sheriff Beckman's walking into a jail falling apart, there are already lawsuits at the jail, he's going to have to deal with that, still having turnover in our jail. You know, it was reported that they're fully staffed, and that is not true, they are not fully staffed. I, I, I think that, that the, I think it's been shown that he is qualified and deserving of the one twenty-nine six oh four. Is that the, that's the, the one twenty-nine six oh four, eighty? And that's my motion to have him start at that.
We, we always have the latitude to increase from year to year, right?
Absolutely. The recommendation when the county clerk was appointed was to start at the minimum and then review in six months and given an increase at that time, because it's always easier to give increases than it is to take money away.
Right.
But again, the commission declined to do that, went ahead and started at higher up.
Seven thousand dollars more.
Yes.
So my question is, if we start sheriff at lower than the recommendation here, we always have that latitude to move up.
Yeah, commission always has the latitude to change elected officials' salaries.
Why would we start them lower than what they did when we've started other people higher? I guess that's the point that people are trying to make.
Well, I'm just, I'm just looking at this, you know, we've got a lot of people that work for the county that got college education, but I don't know that they're actually being recognized, if that's, if that's your premise for this.
When the market study was done, we determined that it was not feasible to go employee by employee and look at each employee. So this pay policy that was drafted was to look at growing our staff and the education that was about when we bring new people in. Talking with Phil, he's more than happy to go employee by employee, position by position, and look at it. For one, commission may not be able to, county may not be able to afford to do that for our existing people. And then there may be people in certain positions that are higher than where they should be, and then they'd be locked in at their current rate and not be able, eligible for increases until the scale, the scale caught up with them. So if that's something the commission wants to do, we have to be consistent across the board, whether it negatively affects existing employees or not.
Keith, you were wanting to give Courtney, and I hate throwing Courtney under the bus like this, but this is what happened in this thing, you were wanting to give her fifteen thousand dollars more than what was recommended, she has no degree, she had zero experience in the job she was going into, and we went ahead and gave her seven thousand dollars more than what, that, that they, I thought we were very, very, and she had, she had some issues, challenges that she had to go through, and, and we gave her that because she had, she had lots of leadership experience. So I, I, I mean, fifteen thousand dollars is a lot, and we ended up giving her seven.
And one thing that I would just like to say is, she's the HR expert, and I'm the finance expert, and you hired us for those reasons, and that's why we're coming here with this recommendation, because this, this is the field that we're in, and this is the information that we have provided to us, and that's the recommendation that we're giving you. So by not looking or truly considering this recommendation, you're invalidating these positions.
I would also like to point out that I don't know Sheriff Beckman. He's come to the office a couple of times to ask questions, same thing when Ms. Gilbert came in, I didn't know her, this isn't personal, this isn't what I think about the person or the position. This is simply me doing my job.
Kathy, your thoughts?
Well, I appreciate all that's been said as well, that, you know, to, you know, when you make your recommendation, again, you get the, the ranges, and when, you know, I appreciate, I understand with, you know, all the ins and outs when you're going and moving and trying to get all those to fit, him, his, his qualifications, I do appreciate knowing some of his other, his other qualifications and that I'd never heard, nor did I research it, or I didn't know where we could find that actually, but I understood that he was a patrolman, is that right, or not? Did she not listen?
I just try and approach again.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's just a yes or no question.
Well, it's in the name that he's a supervisor.
Yeah, I've been on patrol for many, many years, like supervisor, run our investigations unit. Yeah, I mean, I can go through the slides again.
No, I, I just, I wasn't sure, because I thought information I did see that you were a patrol.
All that stuff on social media, I would not believe that stuff.
Well, I wasn't so.
I would also add, in reference to the slides I presented, if you can, I mean, the most important thing is not really what I've truly done, it's about how I bring the community together, that's what we really should be focusing on. I mean, I have the chief of Grandview Plaza here, I have the chief from Junction City, they fully back me, I fully back them, and what I'm really going to bring to the table that's going to benefit the community, which I hope you three recognize, is not the little arguments that we had before with the predecessors. I can guarantee you, based off of my conversations with both chiefs and many other members of law enforcement, that we will provide much better service to the community working together. That's really the most important thing, that's all I have to say.
And I appreciate that. I, I just have a problem with, with the, the step that it's on, you know, you could... So I guess that's where I'm at, I just...
I have a motion on the floor.
Yeah. So do I hear a second? Okay. So for lack of a second, we need to start over.
Somebody wants to speak.
Chair. Yep. Somebody in the audience wants to speak.
Pardon?
Uh, no, I think this is strictly between us and the sheriff, I'm sorry.
I'm a taxpayer, and I voted for Nate.
Okay.
I'm, you're my county commissioner.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah, well, I'm a taxpayer.
Just to be clear, this has nothing to do with Mr. Beckman personally or anything.
I'm a voter in your county, tax man, just asking to say a couple of words.
Okay, then go ahead. State your name, state.
My name's Cody Probst, I live at fifty-three seventy-five Davis Creek Road in the county. And I just like to say the biggest difference between Nate's predecessor and him is Nate was elected sheriff. Mr. Kaufman was not elected, never received a single vote. And when we elected, based on his credentials, we elected to upgrade our sheriff, and we have, and he deserves an upgraded pay. He's got the credentials, I don't understand how you, if you didn't, she didn't even, you didn't even look into his background before he came in, and you automatically suggested that he doesn't get the pay, or nothing. You, I listened to your, your statement, you had no information on it, you knew this was today, I knew this was today. You had every opportunity to look up everything Nate's done, it's, it's, it's public record, it's not that hard. And then you automatically just, what, I'm a voter, I'm a voter, my, my opinion matters as much as you, what's that?
I wasn't sure what the protocol was going to be today.
You're a county commissioner, your protocol has to be informed, you're, you're handing out money, money I put in, actually, you should be informed.
After I read the information, I would have made my decision.
Who's supposed to give you the information, ma'am? You're a county official.
Well, I wasn't sure if Crystal or our HR director had it.
I, I, okay. So basically, what I'm saying is, if you're going to come in uninformed, then you have no input on what Nate's salary should be. That's just my, I'm a voter in this county, and I think we voted to upgrade our sheriff. If you look at his credentials, we have drastically upgraded our sheriff, and he deserves a drastic increase in pay. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner, I'd like to hear why you thought it was okay to go fifteen thousand dollars for the clerk.
Well, I think...
With no experience, no education.
No, I think that's a moot point.
No, I don't, I don't think it's a moot point, I don't think it's a moot point, I don't think it's a moot point, I, I really don't, I, I, I just, that's my question. Are your ears burning?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I'm just... Crystal, I thought you told me that the pay scale wasn't in effect when I took off. The steps weren't in effect, the scale itself was, the minimum, the maximum, all that was, we just didn't have the steps in effect at that time.
So the steps are the A through... But the, the range is the same.
Range, yeah, the range didn't, the range was set. And that part's in the minutes as well, we gave them the range and it's in the minutes.
Well, seems like we're in a standstill, so any, any recommendations on how we break this?
Given the recommendation. May I approach again?
Sheriff.
I hope this is nothing personal, I'm starting to feel that way, you two are obviously completely against me during the campaign, which is fine, I'm willing to start over, because all four of us have to work together. It's not about you three or me, it's about providing to the community. And the community spoke, as, as Mr. Probst said, they, they thought they wanted an upgrade, you know, that's not my words, I do feel like with the comparisons that I've put out, bachelor's degree against a high school degree, years invested at the sheriff department, more, sheriff's school, zero sheriff's school, the sheriff's school is very particular to my position, not counting the twenty-one years I've already done in this line, or over twenty-one years, that prepares me for this, but the sheriff's school is two weeks of nothing but jail operations, budget, and sheriff-specific training. The predecessor before me has not even received that. I've already went into what I've been exposed to at Riley County, something that's maybe be more advanced in my opinion off of my predecessor. So when you start comparing comparisons to my predecessor, that's why the unbiased professional consultant put me in at one hundred and twenty-nine, that is significantly higher, but we got to remember, he was the interim sheriff, he wasn't even the sheriff, he was the interim sheriff, so this is why my...
Actually, he's sworn in as sheriff.
Correct, but to be a true sheriff, you're voted in by the people.
Right.
But that's why there's such a significant dramatic difference, it's, it's nothing I talk with, I, I don't, I've just met these ladies, I haven't even met the consultant. The consultant is a unbiased professional person who made that recommendation. I guess my question to you, Mr. Chairman, or you, Mrs. Tremont, what, what is the reasoning why we will not follow?
First of all, I'll tell you that this is nothing personal, that when I chose to sit in this seat, I was committed to being professional, so my decisions aren't on a personal basis, I don't know you, I'm just going with the information that I'm looking at. And I feel like that's a little high for a, for you to come in and get that particular step, that is only the reason.
Could I, could I ask you two, since you guys appear to be the ones that are hesitant about it, going off of a professional, that, that's what they do for a lady. You, you guys don't do that, I do not set salaries, the professional does, and they set the salary to be recommended around one twenty-nine. I guess my question to you two is, why are you guys hesitant to follow professional advice?
Well, you say a hundred and twenty, around a hundred and twenty-nine, are you saying that then a hundred and twenty-two, that's a hundred, around a hundred and twenty-nine?
You'd have to ask, these two that spoke with the individual from Manhattan.
Around, it sounded like you're saying it would be acceptable to take something other than one twenty-nine.
What are you guys suggesting, what, what would, what would be your suggestion, Kathy?
I would probably be okay with taking somewhere between that, the step where it started and from D to, to H, but, you know, a hundred and twenty-two, a hundred and twenty-five, eight.
And just to clarify, Kathy, with your comment about around one twenty-nine, I didn't have the number in front of me, now I do, so one twenty-nine, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred and four per year. I said around twenty-nine, I did not have that number, I have that in front of me now. So I've been working with pay scales for decades, as most of you probably have as well, so forty-one P is, if you guys, if you guys have the pay scale set by VOCC in front of you guys? So as you, I'm sure you know, a pay scale is a recommendation from forty-one P, A is when you come in with no experience.
I understand that.
I could come in as a civilian with no law enforcement experience, and day one that's my first law enforcement experience, and you guys would be forced to set me at one oh five, based off of the pay scale you set. If I came in with thirty-plus years and a chief of police or sheriff somewhere else, you'd most likely set me towards a one sixty-four, one sixty-nine mark. So to even consider me towards that bottom range is a big insult, I've got over two decades in law enforcement. I personally believe that I deserve to be in the middle, based off my known calculations and research, I had mentioned one thirty-three. I had nothing to do with the professional advice that came in from the consultant in reference to one twenty-nine, nothing to do with that. So I thought that was real interesting, that my research shows me at one thirty-three, and their research, who is the more professional, showed me at one twenty-nine. And I find it to be an insult if we are towards a lower range of this pay scale, because that is for people that come in with three years' experience or six years' experience. I come in with almost twenty-two years. So that's the last thing I want to say, I can answer any questions if you guys have those.
So what would be your number?
Per the recommendation from the finance director and, and the HR director, I, I would be willing to go with the, the, his, the request of one twenty-six, six oh four.
Is that a motion?
I will make that motion.
Second?
Then move in second, for...
Forty-one P, step H.
Recommendation, you know, for the public that...
One twenty-nine, six oh four, eighty.
Thank you.
One twenty-nine, six oh four?
Yes, eighty. Let me make sure, yes.
So I got a motion in a second, all in favor, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Yeah?
I'm, I'm sorry. Aye.
And then the last thing we need to do then is to set Ms. Tremont's salary. She had a concern that she could dress with me, so I wasn't sure if coming in where you guys were, or at the bottom, what her, where she would be comfortable.
I resolved my issues with whatever that I, I had with my salary.
Okay, so, coming in at the same rate you two were at?
That has been the precedent that everybody's getting paid the same, and I feel the same as well.
Just wanted it for confirmation, and then we will change the stipend to Mr. Asher to reflect his becoming the chairman.
I do have a question. Since Kathy retired, is there a issue with capers?
Once she hits $40,000, the county will have to pay in 30% towards capers.
Okay.
But you do not have 40,000, so that should not be an issue.
Yeah, unless you guys take a significant pay increase, then you shouldn't hit 40,000.
See, after talking to capers, she said that elected officials aren't under any of those, so I didn't have to worry about anything.
Okay, well, we'll double check that just to make sure.
Okay. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Sorry for the drug-out process, but doing our due diligence, I guess you'd say. Nate, welcome.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
I'll be back in a second. The new city manager and the city commissioner have reached out and are requesting. And I have spoken to Jeremy and, and Gary and also Kathy. Jeremy has said, sorry, nothing happened this weekend, which nothing did. So, anyway, somebody said, if anything happened, they would be in a good position if at least have one or two help with this. So, I reached out to Betsy and, and Gary, and they both feel that it would be a understanding memorandum of like mutual aid, like our fire department and our chairs department, that we'd be able to do that. So, I am going to ask that. And I'm assuming we'll have to do a vote.
So, what I did is I did make some. Okay, I, I bid up a resolution. We don't have a current agreement. What's that? They're not having to meet until the 21st. And so, basically, it says that just for the time that the deputy is going to run, moving through the 16, that at Jeremy's discretion, Public Works Director's discretion, we will provide aid in the Public Works Department as available. And that it'll be a signed goodwill across to the city. And that I'm going to have the city sign a labor plan. We are ready to wait on our resolution. But I obviously get a waiting service for them first day. So, they make this sign, and they're waiting times against us, and create the resolution.
Jeremy thinks we're going to help you?
Yeah, I was more important about being able to help and then our money being rested after all the stuff that they've been doing. And they, everything is good this weekend, so, you know, I'll reach out, we can reach out to Jeremy again, but my toddler is going to approach you guys. Couldn't make that decision. Yeah, I make a motion that we agree to a mutual.
Run and grab the resolution.
Okay. A mutual aid agreement with the city for this record-breaking snowfall incident and be able to help them out. And I had a nice chat with the city manager. Looking forward to you guys meeting him as well. I think he is very motivated to get some changes done and, and all along the same. I was very relieved after talking to him.
Somebody has a second?
I didn't know. We're always supposed to be.
All second.
All resolutions are the date that they're adopted, unless there's four or whatever. So, this will be resolution 113, 105.
Yep. So, there's a motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is Dr. Butter coming?
I don't see her. Because I think they put that on when she was here before, and I didn't hear anything, so I left it on, but.
Oh, you mean when?
That other lady was here with Rick?
With Rick?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Because he asked to put that on a long time ago, and then I just left it on, so evidently not.
Are these packets usually just put on our desk on Monday morning, or should I have gone?
You go with the agenda.
Yeah, but they're going to start sending out the packets, I thought. So, we get them by Friday.
Whenever I was handed this letter and stuff, it's just kind of hard to, this letter we were given, whatever. I don't like to necessarily read it while we're talking.
Yes, we are, we are in the process of making sure that.
Anyway, too, I didn't get the email again. And I didn't get, I was going to say, if you sent something, I didn't get anything, so.
The email, like the agenda email?
Yeah, I was getting information, and then I, I don't get it. And then she sent me a test, whatever day it was.
Did you check in your agenda file?
And I didn't get the new one. You know, I saw where you sent the one agenda and then the second one. I didn't get the second one, so it's kind of weird.
So, we did just have them update your email, because you're K Tremont, and this is trish.gor.kief.asher. And I asked them to add a Kathy Tremont that will automatically go to what was already set up.
I was just going to say, sometimes I thought in the past, they've always had two or three ways that it could be accepted.
Yeah, the thing was, I was afraid if the public knew these twos, they would use the same one for you, and then it would be wrong, and it wouldn't come to you. So, I wanted to make sure that it was said in both ways.
Maybe she gave me the wrong, sent me the wrong.
You should get them from both. Yeah, it should come to your K Tremont.
This will make it say, write this.
Did you check in?
Yeah. But yes, we're starting to do the.
I like to get, yes, I try to do my homework ahead of time.
Yeah.
I did send you one this weekend, or maybe Friday, about a, the compensation, the study for the jail assessment. You were on that one. Did that one?
I have not gotten anything from, since I talked to you.
Did you get anything this morning from me?
Jail number thing?
Yeah, I, I saw her, her name was on the one you sent.
Yeah.
We probably need to reach out to our IT guy. I'll, I'll reach out to him and let him know he needs to come through and all stuff, make sure it's all set up. Okay. Did you, is your email on your computer now?
Yeah, I was just looking on my phone just to see if I've got anything else from Tris and my spam again.
You should be able to see on your email on the computer now, too. Maybe, maybe they didn't, maybe the incoming or outgoing SMP address is incorrect or something. Betsy's going to try to send you one. Kathy and see if it comes through. She's an outside entity. Did you get Jamie's AP one?
With all the, the doctor stuff? She sent that out on Thursday, I think.
Yeah, or Friday.
Yeah, maybe Friday. My days have been running together.
I'm going to go grab Crystal for you.
Now, it's coming back. It said it's Addy and Kathy Tremont.
She's having an issue with her email, so I'll go back and look. She's been getting. Oh, great. Look at those. Crystal Malcho's, HR director, back for your pleasure today. I'm working on the pans for the sheriff, Ms. Tremont, so as soon as I have those, I'll bring them in for your signature key. And then, just a reminder, we're new for one of the commissioners. Next Wednesday, January 22nd, is Local Government Day at the Capitol. That's when the Kansas Association of Counties, in conjunction with the League of Kansas Municipalities, will get together and co-host a meeting so that we can hear from our legislators and get updated on what's expected during this term in, at the State House. They average 80 to 100 attendees, but at the moment, there's only 43 signed up. So, they're strongly encouraging elected and appointed leaders to sign up. If any of you are interested in attending, if you just let me know, I'd be happy to do that for you. In addition, they have County Day at the Capitol set up for February 6th. And these events are free. There's no cost to the county for any of our participants. It's just to encourage you to be involved at the state level. And then I will be there on the 22nd. We'll have our KAC board meeting that morning, and then I'll participate in the Local Government Day that afternoon and evening.
County Day is on the 6th of February? I'll, I'll do that one.
Okay.
What time is that? Do you know?
I'll send you the details.
Okay.
Usually starts around 9:00 and goes to around 2:00 or so. And they provide lunch. We fitted last year box lunches. Tammy and I participated last year, and so did CBV.
That's a good name.
So, if you want additional information, I'd be happy to let you know. And Kathy, did you get the confirmation about the new commissioner's orientation later this week?
Yeah, there wasn't anything else to follow, which I see that I've got all the, the emails on Microsoft here, that are from wherever, yeah.
Okay.
But no, I, there wasn't anything, they didn't send a packet or anything ahead of time for us to.
An agenda or anything?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll forward you an agenda.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, and you are signed up for the finance budgeting information on Wednesday?
I didn't know. Sometimes any more of those classes, they expect you to print everything.
Ahead of time.
Bring it with you instead of handing it out, so.
Yeah, I'll be happy to get that ready for you and get that done. I'll be in all week this week, and again, next Wednesday's the only day I'll be out. I don't have anything else expected. If I do, I'll run it through Tammy. We, the human resources have finalized 2024 payroll. Make sure all of our I's, dotted and T's were crossed, and this week, we'll start the W2 process. And continuing to work with other departments as necessary, internal investigations, recruitment, a lot of recruitments right now, especially at the Health Department. And Ms. Tremont, later today, I will give you copies of CBV director and public works director applications. We've started the CBV director process, simply because it's been open for so long. I have been in contact with a few of the applicants to let them know that it was delayed due to the weather, and they're fine with that. We've received a couple more applications. At least one or two are highly qualified. So, I will get those to you, and you can make determinations as to.
When is that process hoping to be completed?
As soon as possible. We were waiting for you to get here so we could schedule interviews, so.
I hate to, to say this, but this has been like a long time ago being done, but I'm, I'm going on a cruise leaving on Friday.
Oh, okay.
And I won't be back until Saturday.
Okay, I will get you the information, and if you read you it, in the meantime, and let me know who you're interested in. If we can get interviews scheduled for maybe the week of the 27th or the first week of February.
Okay, and I, and if I could be available, if you want to do a conference call or whatever, then I'll be happy to do that. But yeah, that was, it was a long time ago that we did that, so.
No, come on, you got to put your mic on hold. So, all right, I will get you that information so you have an opportunity to review it, and if you let me know before you leave on your cruise, what your availability is when you get back for interviews, and if you have any recommendations as to who should be interviewed.
Okay, yep, I will be happy to look over.
So, you won't be here next Monday then, or?
Or Tuesday, actually.
Right, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I thought they were for a bit.
Well, I was just going to say, then we can just figure out the next week and get those on the, the calendar.
So, the week of January, do we have?
It has been, it has been a while. And we interviewed one person that was in town, because she actually lives in Las Vegas, and she was in town and.
And she'll be in town again this week on Wednesday. Unfortunately, Kathy will be at.
Oh, she'll be on.
New commissioner's orientation.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, yeah, I'll make myself available now, you know, that I've shifted gears, then I will certainly make myself available whenever needed.
Okay, so if we get something set up for the week of the 27th or the 3rd, then we could just get it scheduled, and you'll make yourself available?
Yep.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that perfectly. All right, well, then.
Don't do it to six.
Have a question. I forgot one of those.
Right.
The six.
For County Day.
You said you got a couple more applications.
For the CBV director.
Yeah, would you get those?
Yes, absolutely. No, you're just going to have to make a decision without seeing them. Yes, I'll, I'll bring those to you whenever you have hands. Any questions? All right, I will be here the rest of the day. If you guys have any questions, you want to call me back in?
All those emails bounce back.
Pardon?
All those emails, they bounce back.
Zach's still here? Emails to you now?
I sent him some emails.
I got Jamie's and Tammy's and Tris's.
But Betsy just tried and it bounced back, so.
I did K Tremont, and then K Tremont.
Did you do Kathy Tremont?
It should be Kathy Tremont.
In the K Tremont, it should have worked too, but. By Kathy Tremont. At Gary County dot org. I wonder if it's because hers is, all of ours are at Gary County dot org, and Betsy's is not.
Kathy Tremont.
Kathy Tremont. At Gary County dot org. Oh, wait, see if this one bounces back before I connect. You ready?
I'm ready.
Good morning, Commissioners Cameron Robinson, Finance Director. I have a couple of things. Courtney mentioned this morning, the gap waiver, so I do have that. So, this would be resolution number 113, 2025, and this is where it exempts us out of doing gap financials. Instead, we do the K-MAG, the Kansas.
And then have an A to that one?
Yeah.
Because we're, we just passed the resolution.
Okay, yep, I'll write the A behind it. And so, then I would just need a motion to accept a resolution exempting Gary County, Kansas, from the provisions of KSA 75-1120AA.
I'll second.
Remove. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. And this will be all commissioners sign, and then the deputy will attest. There's two there, Trisa, one's for your records as well. And then, just a couple of things to let you know, the quarterlies that are due into the paper, as a commission statute, those will be published on the 15th, so you'll be able to see.
those will be published on the 15th, so you'll be able to see those in the paper. I also sent an email concerning the Jensen proposal. And just a little background for the new Commissioner. The Jensen proposal is based on the HMN Phase II contract for the jail. They recommended doing a jail population study. And so they had given us a couple of entities to check in with to see what they would propose as an estimated cost for this. We did get information back from one, and the other one hasn't reached back out yet. So I did forward you those, and that is one of the emails that you would have, Commissioner Tramont. And then, the next thing I just wanted to let you know is we did previously have a meeting with CIC concerning the issues that we've had and been having. And so the representative reached back out to all the department heads and asked for them to present a formal list of what they need to be either trained, because they weren't formerly trained, or what they need to be retrained on. So it is up to each of the department heads to reach back out and let them know what we're missing. I did send ours back, and we didn't have anything that we felt like we needed to do differently in AP or in payroll. So then the other thing, just to let you know, as Crystal mentioned, she closed out the year for AP. And with these quarterly statements being published, we've also cleared or closed out the 2024 year on the financial side. So we're working towards... We only have the 13th period that'll go through till February 2nd. And once that's done, then we'll close the year out completely. I'll run all the financial information. We'll get that to the auditors so that they can set up a time to get in here and start our audit.
Did I understand you correctly to say that the software... Everybody's happy with the way things are working now? Because that sounds like a nightmare.
Yeah, we haven't had any issues, so...
No, it's not in the area office. She's saying... And each person has to say what their issues are.
Right. Yeah.
So I'm just, you know, I've been through that stuff and whatever. So I hope that, you know, part of that is, you know, you can't identify it until it comes along.
Right.
And some of this stuff, I understand, has been delayed and everything else. But there's no reason why that I... Because I know in the Treasurer's Office experienced, yep, that they don't have time to try to figure all that stuff out. So if I ever have the opportunity to sit down with CIC, I'd like to be included in that conversation too, because I sat on some of those committees before. And when I was Treasurer, we were never gonna take that software until all the bugs were out. I always told them, no, don't come talking to me until all the bugs are out. And when they showed us the program, and I had my Sherry and Linda sit in there with it, what we saw and what I understand they'd been given is totally different and is unexcusable. And we do... They don't have the time to sit and try to figure things out as they go. So I hope that... I don't feel like, I mean, we have to reach out if there's problems. I understand that. But they should have a person on site here helping these people get through those problems, to me.
Well, you need to remember that there's seventy-some counties that use CIC, so they don't have that many employees to do.
Well, that's their problem. That's not the Gary County's problem.
Well...
And that's, you know, I, like I said, I don't think that was ever any part of the agreement when you come through there, that all that stuff. And I know it's not your problem either. I just have been through these software changes and stuff. And again, with CIC, they... What they promised and what they handed out are two different things, so... I'm glad that you're able to get through it, but that doesn't do anything for... No, and that's why we had... I called them and had them come here.
Yeah.
Because they...
They owed us an explanation.
They did. And, you know, and I called the Supervisor, and I was like, listen, you know, our guys have been having so many problems, and I don't know what the issue is. And so they sent somebody here who only knew half of the issues. And that's, you know, we were gonna have a staff meeting last week, but because of the snow, we went ahead and stopped it. But I do... I didn't know that they had reached out to have everybody send this stuff, but I thought they'd already given that information to them.
Yes, they did, but I think they wanted everything in writing.
Specific stuff, yeah. And we do need to follow up on that, because if it does not, if it's not addressed, then we need to keep pounding them until they do address it. But we can't expect everybody to come here and sit with us. You know, if it's something that... If it's a training issue, yes, for sure. But, I mean, we're gonna have to get through this and figure it out together. It's been over a year. It's been almost two years, yes. Yeah. So, yeah, and... But this was the first time anybody contacted the Supervisor and had them come here. That should have been done. Like I said, I sat and went to dinner and everything else with those people when they were trying to get that sold. And I said, well, as far as I'm concerned as Treasurer, I said, I will never agree to that until all this, all these bugs have been worked out. So with the number of counties that have it, you would think this wouldn't happen.
Exactly. Well, and they're not all having it. So, I mean, it's because we're inexperienced, and we don't have the knowledge that we probably need in order to do what we're doing. And so whether it's a lack of training or whatever, that's what we have to figure out so that we can gain that knowledge.
So you're saying it's not necessarily software, it's user?
If we didn't have the right training, it is.
There was not an issue with the software. But I do not feel that it was implemented correctly.
Right. I think it's the training that we're lacking.
So what do you think?
Or training.
Yeah, I think the training was...
Well, like I said, last year was the first year that we did the July abstract. We had somebody here, but... And she would say, blah, 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 do this. Well, then she'd say, oh, no, I gotta go do this. It's the quality of training. Oh, no, I gotta go do this. Oh, you know. So as she said, Tammy, we have not had a full training session that just goes through what's on our checklist, because there were so many problems when we converted. And that's what we went through with the movers. And I guess that's why I'm so persistent about it, is because when we went through the movers, the same thing. Yeah, we didn't know. We sat through there, and we tried to get through the issues and, you know, but we kept running the snakes, so we'd never get to square two. And then when you'd come back and say, well, go do that, well, we never found out how we're supposed to do it the right way, so... Well, and I know that the IC doesn't have enough people to send out. But when they sold us this stuff... That's exactly. They sat right there and said, you know, we said, will you be able to have people on site? Oh, yes, we have lots and lots of people trained and blah, blah, blah.
Well, and when we come on board, they had like, I don't know, five or seven other counties from Illinois to Kansas that they were also bringing on, which was part of the problem, because they were spread way too thin for that kind of an onboarding. And so we know from that, we didn't get the training that we should have. We had a very inexperienced person, and we definitely told them. I mean, I didn't pull any punches. I let them know exactly how I felt about the person that they sent.
And the customer service has not been good, and they've been told that as well. So, I mean, we just need to keep on... Did we pay the whole thing?
No, we have not.
No, we have not paid that thing. Payment until they fulfill their contract. Do they still send them?
Well, I mean, right now, we had a three-years onboarding. You know, we had to pay so much each year. And because the training with the timing of the tax bill, the abstract, you couldn't just do it all at once. So we have the last payment to finish paying them. But I've told them too, if we didn't get the training that we were expecting, we aren't going to pay for that training that didn't exist.
Well, part of the media of that was that it was gonna be easier, because you were gonna do that in those steps to integrate everybody as it goes, so we didn't have the, you know...
But it was a push. They did do that. They pushed, pushed, and pushed. And so, you know, again, any transition of software is never gonna be easy, and there's always gonna be some glitches. But I feel like we've had more challenges than we would have expected. So we are working through it. It's just not been super clean. I feel pretty good about the financial and the payroll side now. But it took me all of '23 and a lot of extra hours up on weekends, three o'clock in the mornings, trying to figure out how to balance '23, because it was such a disaster coming in for the '23 year.
And unfortunately, you know, with what they have down there, knowing that is that that's a constant, whatever, you have to try to do that with everything else you're doing. So, you know, they don't have the luxury necessarily of being able to work at home and all that other stuff. So it's just kind of getting it done during the work hours, which I appreciate your diligence. I'm not taking away, you know, but I'm just saying that they're, you know, not able to necessarily take their work home and figure it out.
Yeah. So we are working through that, and that's where we're at right now, which since Commissioner DuRidana was at that meeting, I wanted to make sure you all knew that they did ask for a list and were to send that out. And so hopefully, we'll have some information back about them either coming to retrain us or train us on the things that we've missed.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the department heads at our next meeting to see where we're at with that, because, I mean, maybe we have to write a letter. And, I mean, I think we made it perfectly clear that we were not happy with them at that meeting.
Yeah, I think everybody gave that input in there on the Clerk's Office, the Treasurer's Office. We all.
But I know when we used to be with Thompson Reuters before, and we had issues with some of it, and, you know, we lived it all and dated with whatever at a conference. They were there the next week, and they were here in getting everybody straightened out. I mean, it was like, you know, so that is the expectation when stuff like that happens with that major of a transition to happen, because it's just as hard. I feel bad for all you people trying to figure that out, so...
Well, we'll keep forging forward. I think every time we learn something new and we know what we need to make sure we're not doing going forward, and so...
Well, it also made it bad where we lost our project manager. Our what? Our project manager. Oh, yeah. Well, they didn't even tell us. No, they didn't tell us. So here we are, trying to get with Liz, right? Liz, yeah.
Yeah.
She never answered, and we didn't even know she wasn't doing it anymore. So that certainly didn't help.
Well, and to be fair to them, when they came, they had a really good sales pitch. So all the departments that used them were on board and said yes to it.
Oh, yeah.
So we were all for one and one for all.
But like she said, what they say and what they brought were two different things. And that's where... I was going for down the door, so I took Sherry and Linda with me. And I said, you know, I'm not gonna make that decision. I want you guys to make it. And yeah, we were all like, yeah, we liked the reports. We liked the ease of getting it and all that other stuff. And so I thought, I felt comfortable when I'm leaving that that's one more, something easier they were gonna be able to do to make their job easier, for sure.
Well, we're working on that, so... So that's the update on that. W2s will be scheduled to go out at the end of the month, as will the 1099s. So we're working on those, both in the Finance and the HR Office. So that's what I have as an update. Once you review, because since Commissioner Tramont didn't get that email until this morning, if you review that Jensen proposal, and you have any questions or concerns or want me to ask other specific questions to him, just let me know. You can send me a quick email.
You're still waiting? You're back for the other one?
I am. I left a message, and I'm just waiting for a callback to get a written proposal like this. This guy I talked to on the phone, and then he sent the written proposal. And something that's kind of neat about this guy from Jensen is he is a... This isn't Jensen. Justice Planners. The neat thing about him is he actually graduated from Junction City. His name's Alan Richardson. He graduated from Junction City High School. His name's Alan Richardson. And his wife graduated from Manhattan High. And so he has military ties as well. So he has strong Gary County background.
And you said the name of his thing is Justin?
No, it's Justice Planners. I'm sorry. I kept saying the wrong thing. Justice Planners and Alan Richardson is who it is.
She did.
I did, but it was wrong.
So I got a question on the vouchers, the one right on the top, a late fee.
On the...
In the black.
On the... This one? In the... On the lease?
Yep, in the price.
He didn't get us to us on time?
They didn't?
He didn't bring it in on time? And so he have to pay the late fee?
I don't want to pay the late fees.
Neither do we. That's why we've tried to transition so many things to ACH and wires so that we don't end up having those fees. So... And we have on the most part, but that's one company that won't do it. And since it didn't get into our office on time, I ended up paying fees. All right, any other questions?
Nope.
Are you all done with this, or are you all still reviewing?
No, I haven't done it.
Okay, I'll leave it, and I'll get it later. I'll be back at 12:15 for the CIC work session. We'll put it up on the screen.
Do you got anybody else coming in?
So Jeremy should be here, and so should Mr. Beckman and possibly the UnderSheriff, because they're the ones with the requests.
Okay, well...
Did you get a test email from them? But I just said no. I got one from Betsy. Because Zach called. He wants you to call in after the meeting.
Okay.
So we might as well be finishing up here and update. I don't know that Kathy's gonna have...
She might. She can have something to say.
Yeah.
She might have questions. Yeah. Well, I had a... Imperial Health. That was on the thing beyond... Well, I'll continue on that too. Imperial Health had a strategic planning meeting just to give their presentation of their goals and outlook for 2025. They're doing very well. Their, you know, goals are to have better service and more prompt service, and they have been working towards that and showing some progress. Very... With their response with the crisis, mobile crisis intervention, that was something they just started this past year in Gary County, which I think is very beneficial, where they have a mobile crisis go to different places. They go to the jail. They have been to any incident that somebody just calls and says, hey, I'm having a crisis. I can't get there. They go to them. I think, you know, our mental health is very important, especially around the holidays with people. They're still in the works of getting, working with law enforcement and having coresponders. That is a... Where they have an actual mental health person working in with law enforcement. They have a very successful program that has been going on in Riley County for years. So I'm really looking forward to them being able to assist our Sheriff and our Police Department with that. I think that will, you know, sometimes the only alternative that we have from people who are actually having mental crisis is take them to jail, and that's not the place for them to be. And having that in place, I think, is gonna address some of those issues, so...
So do they also work with the hospital?
Yes, they've been working with the hospital on the... I mean, they've been working with everybody. I think Mike's been doing a good job, our new, the new CEO there. Again, I had said this earlier. I met with the new City Manager, Kim Zimmerman. He is hitting the ground running, trying to improve some stuff. And he is dedicated to working with us and repairing the relationships and possibly partnering with things in the future that we should already be partnering with and serving our citizens who pay county and city taxes. And so I'm really looking forward to his leadership and his vision. And I'd like to, again, thank our Public Works and our Sheriff's Department continuing to work since last week on the snow. I have received tons of compliments from our county citizens on how good of a job that they did.
They did.
And they did. And, I mean, I've received a couple of complaints. You know, nothing's gonna be perfect, especially when we've gotten record snowfall, but they hit it out of the park, getting that stuff addressed. And I think I'm really glad that you guys agreed as far as helping out with the city. You know, they're down people, they're down equipment. You know, it's the right thing to do to help our citizens.
So with that said, are you gonna let Jeremy know?
Well, he's gonna come, so we can tell him.
Oh.
Yeah. He'll be coming for the CIC. I'll just have him reach out to Ray so they know. And Jeremy, actually, we talked about this. You know, their trucks are a little bit bigger than the city's trucks, so they're not gonna be able to go on the smaller streets. But what Mr. Zimmerman and I talked about was what they were gonna ask us to do is the northeast side of town, like, you know, down by the transfer station. And, you know, and they also have a gravel road out there on East 10th Street. So, you know, things like that where they're, you know, will be able to do it safely, so... That's all I have.
I didn't have any meetings this past week. I got meetings this week, but none really important on that side, so... Yeah, I think you got anything you'd like to... Yeah, did you get anything you'd like to comment on?
Um, no, just the fact that I, uh, with the, the snow crisis, I think that, uh, overall, I think that, um, everybody did, uh, do an amazing job. And I have always, uh, thought or said that about our county public works, that they do a great job about getting the rural roads. I hope that that continues. It sounds like it did. I didn't get any complaints. Not yet. Otherwise, I just, I hope it does, because it is, I, you know, gosh, that was a learning experience, I'm sure, for, for them. I know that they always used to talk about, uh, you know, not even being able to see the roads when they get out in the rural part of town. So no, there was no accidents or anything out there or anything. Um, because of before. Not with our stuff, but I think that they had a ton of stuff off the highway. The sheriff's department worked out with some semis when the ice first started. But I don't think times they had those plows that went in the.
Off the road. I don't think we have that this time.
Yeah, I don't think. I hadn't heard any anyway.
Yeah.
So kudos to them. I think that's, that's. Yeah, because it's probably hard to see with all that snow where the asphalt road is.
Pushing that stuff and then like, this would be all.
Well, and I think for the most part, the public was patient with this.
They were.
Because they knew how bad it was.
Yeah, it was crazy.
So it wasn't like, uh, a skip of snow. Home community related.
Well, and there, and I talked to Jeremy about this, so we're getting software. And apparently the city already has the software capability where they can show where the, the trucks are. So, um, Troy is gonna work with the city about getting those maps. So then people can see in, in, when it's like this, that, okay, the trucks are here in this area. So hopefully there'll be, you know, just a little more communication. I think people just wanted to know. We know it's gonna take a while, but do you have any idea when you're gonna be in the area? You know?
Well, that said, I'm good in the home.
Me too. I drank too much coffee today. Guess I better go too.
Yeah, my hair will change as well.
Is there a little desk clock or something or a feather?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I thought that's Courtney. She hides it all the time. I don't know if I got that city resolution back. I don't know what they did with my desk. Cause I, I got the gap one. And she gets one of these. I don't have that sick one.
I handed it to the chairman there.
Okay.
I want all these after.
I was gonna say. Did you sign the resolution for the city aid that we're gonna help them?
Um, but I think it was just those two things. It was the same thing.
That was gap.
Yeah, yeah.
I got five to go.
My sister lost her. She's actually, I never came back yet because she's had so many infections. I guess I didn't talk to her. So what happened was she had this. She was taking it out. I told them, I said, you know, she was in a. It's not bad. I think it was her. She did a reaction. They had to clean her up and do a chemo. I, I told them. She's totally done with it. She's, what did you have to say?
That's terrible. Yeah. That's terrible. Unfortunately.
So he wanted to do a little, I don't know. He signed up for RAC. And then when he called, he, um, he was like, okay. He was like, I'm gonna get crutch. Cause he had a frequent, uh, conference, which was this one, he always saw. And I, I didn't got spare. And I said, well, so I said, can you count how many you've had? And so he wanted, he said, we'll have about a dozen a year. And so he said, you put them in contract. It's the same RAC one, ten dozen. Also, this is, he's not a year. But, I don't know, I'll explain it, but.
Okay. So, but it's not more money?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's like, I don't have time.
To do every single one of them.
Yeah.
Look how it's gonna look this year. So that's the only term that changes it. Distance, that is a third of the conflicts. He's taking 12.
Well, so you told me any system related. And then you were here before me. I thought, well, whatever. Yeah, yeah.
See if she left the gap waiver for me. Can I still miss one of these?
Yes.
You've got one. Thank you.
Does somebody have the other resolution for, with the city thing?
I only signed one.
Yeah, that was it.
Well, they signed the gap waiver. Does she have?
The one I handed to you.
Well, I signed it.
Here it is.
Did she sign it?
No, she hasn't signed it yet.
We gotta get on her, which is wherever she is.
I think she did.
Betsy said she needs a copy of it. I said, I don't, I don't have it. I don't know where it is. That's not very good.
Oh, here Keith. You might need this.
Right there.
That was funny. Should I use it this morning? There's a lot of people here. Cause everybody was just so loud and they wouldn't be quiet.
And I'm so soft spoken, they didn't hear me.
I know. Oh, yeah. We can't ever hear Trish when she talks. It's not, Debbie.
It's not your school or anything, you know?
There is much cooler down here. There was a lot of people.
I know. It was got hot in here.
That was a lot. It was hot. Oh, my.
You guys want me to just take these to the.
Sure.
Are you guys gonna get one?
No, I don't.
Okay, well, I'll just put it in the ring so they don't get hard.
Well, we don't want hard growth damage.
No.
I'm gonna like wait for like.
True. That's what I was gonna say though. I'm gonna write up.
Lime water.
Oh, I just drank my lime water.
Did you guys, um, come through the storm unscathed the Taurus vehicles?
No, we had two that were damaged.
Dead? Nobody got hurt?
Nobody got hurt. They were alive. Yeah. We got lucky.
Did you see Ryan's car?
No.
A, a huge, um, uh, ice, uh, thing came on a semi and, uh, smashed through her windshield while she was driving on the interstate.
Oh, Jesus, who?
Her daughter.
That's crazy.
I know. She's so, I'm so lucky she's all right. Look at that.
Oh, wow.
She kept, I'm so glad she kept control of the car.
They haul off the car and, or was it, could she see?
Oh, jeez.
Thank God it was on that side of the.
Yeah. Well, that's how scared they.
The whole entire, the thing where you, you know, open up your, you can do, press the, open up the garage door, the console there that flew down.
I said she was lucky that she could go watch the road, because that scared the hell out of me.
Yeah, well, she pulled over and had to calm down a little bit. Thank God. I, I got on my knees and thank God she was.
Everybody's here and it's not really public comment, but just so y'all were tracking, there are now two spots open on the 911 board and y'all are the appointing party for that. So both the sheriff, which was the head or the president, and then Tony Van Buren also resigned. Effective at the beginning of the year. So there are two spots that'll need to be appointed on the 911 board.
Well, I think, and I don't know, um, if you even know this, but, you know, they don't have enough money to pay their bills this month. The 911 board.
Yeah, I know. The, the, um, the 911 yearly contract was just like a hundred and nine thousand dollars.
How much are we short?
I have to pull up the financials again. I was looking at that last week, cause I'm not technically, I'm not on the board.
Yeah.
But yes, it was short and I honestly don't know. I know that they paid the, uh, the loan that was taken out for the equipment, but they were short for the actual yearly contract for the 911 equipment. The phone call, the actual phone service itself.
Yeah. So I, 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 I think this is a discussion that we need to put on, um, on the commission and have the chief and the sheriff here, um, or whoever's on the police department that's on that board.
It's, it's the assistant chief of them.
Okay. And, 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 uh, and then invite any of these members, because I, I, I think we need to go through these, I mean, we're, technically the county is responsible. Actually, the city gives the P staff, which is responsible for that money. And then it's turned over to the board and, uh, it's just a little, uh, disturbing that they don't have enough money to pay their bills. So I think it's something that we need to look at and, and, uh, and see if we can be a little.
That's the 911?
For it.
Wow.
Well, that and there's, there's certainly, when they, I guess they, there's two different accounts. There's an account for the old law and the way, because it's governed based upon the statute, how that money can be spent. And then there's a new, where the P staff, which is what you were talking about, comes in on a monthly basis and we just got a P staff. So I don't know if that's gonna put us enough in the black to pay that or not without reviewing.
Well, and I think for us to be doing our due diligence and being responsible for that money just to have a, a meeting is, and so we're all on the same page about it.
Well, I, I agree with you completely.
I mean, what do you guys think?
But y'all will have to appoint two new members.
Yeah, yeah.
But yes, I'll have to look at the financials. I just got a email from Sharon earlier basically stating that they just received a monthly P staff. So with that, hopefully that puts it in the black.
Okay. And then, and then that would make more sense, so.
Yeah.
Well, my thoughts would be that, you know. Sure.
Sure, for sure. Do you think maybe we need a finance person on there?
No. Maybe, then you have more tech function.
Cause I mean, ultimately, the county and the city commission are responsible for those monies. I mean, their tax money, they never had a problem with it before the time, only time I remember and they had Dinkle a couple, several years ago. That's the only thing that it's always been. Yeah, but, and nobody noticed that, that no money was coming in. I mean, that's an issue. I mean, we should have popped that when that, when Dinkle did that.
God love dust. Art is out.
Yep.
Yeah.
It stays on.
So do you want me to try to get that on the agenda, like, at the end of the month?
Yeah.
Since she's gonna be gone next.
Yeah. Yes, yes. I'd like all three of us here, just so we can, I just feel like we need to do our due diligence and figure out what's going on. When you said there was money coming in, I was trying to think, because we always just got that from the state or wherever they did. I understand that, but Dinkle called and had them transferring it to the city and nobody was noticing that that money wasn't coming in for.
There was information given to them because he had called. And we said that this is the way that it's supposed to happen. And then he did otherwise. And that's when I, whoever wrote.
Nobody, nobody on that board knew that there was no money coming in. That happened because the sheriff had not either. Nobody, nobody noticed that it was coming in. I got the mail saying that, uh, when he was told and what transpired there. Yeah, it had been going on almost a year when we found out, when, when the public found out in the, in the 911 board. It was in the paper.
But if we have the term number, which means Deputy's coming, they're trying to run the county so there's no, there's pushing like 250, 300 miles per shift travel order in the county versus, and if you don't have a lot of term number, you have Deputy, you have to put 115, you know, you're calling. So I want to. It's the F, it's just the X. Usually they can test out phases, but it takes a few years of your experience. It usually takes about 16 to 18 weeks for them to test out the FTR program. So, yeah. And then of course the term number.
Yes, the inventory already been done? Are they just turning them in?
I don't think Alex did.
I, he must know that, because Courtney said she never got them. I've never seen them.
They're just, so these aren't, because they're down there because they need to be done in these four? What am I supposed to check?
Oh, I don't know.
I don't think. Emergency management, fire and sheriff. District court?
Well, that's a, I'm like you guys, like all you guys.
I thought you had the sheriff. I don't know, did Keith, did you have the sheriff? I see how this is.
I got, I know I got.
What's the bed monitor supposed to be done on? I should have heard. I was gonna say, we're gonna start with new ones.
Yeah, we might as well just do the new ones.
I'll say just take them all.
Yeah, right. Does Twin Valley, was just a information base?
Do we have Twin Valley here now?
Yep. Hey, Jeremy.
Yes.
We did approve to be able to assist the city. So if you want to reach out to Ray and see what all, but, um, and, and based on your availability. You know.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Ray and see what.
Okay. Thank you.
The department meeting was just one of the four Monday of the month. And I know we've had one for a while because of the weather. He's a little bit, but I leave it on the twice of the fourth Monday.
Yeah.
And it's not always those set funds.
Yeah, I'm not scheduled.
Okay. Yeah, just have her back me at the end of the day so we don't have people, you know what I mean? So then people coming in and stuff.
Send their weight.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, we may have a couple of comments, so thank you for your review.
Okay. Kimmy Robinson, Finance Director. I'm back again with the C I P program, uh, the work session for this. I wanted to give the, the, just a brief history for Commissioner Tremont, just as a new commissioner, so she's not coming in completely blind without any background information. So, uh, when I came in 2022, we didn't currently have a C I P program. And so that was one of the first things that we worked on getting in place. So when I went through the budget cycle, we went through all of the different funds and outside monies, outside departments, and tried to bring those together. So they're all blanketed largely under the general fund. Um, for a couple of reasons. The first reason is to protect them from going over budget or running out of cash. And second of all, to allow us to create this program to take care of all those departments. Because anything outside the general fund is not to be using these C I P funds. So for instance, your fee fund, solid waste, um, health department. Those are different funds that are not part of the general fund levies. So this C I P program is tied to the general fund levies. So when we did that, we consolidated several of the funds and we ended up transferring 3.2 million in 2022 to start this program from the general fund with these consolidations. And then along with that, just so you're aware, um, at that point in time, the C I P fund had 777,000 in it. That's all it had. And we weren't utilizing it the way it could be utilized. So we looked at expanding that and enhancing this fund in order to take care of the county's needs. Um, we put a reserve plan in place, not only in the general fund, but in the C I P. So there is $500,000 in that fund that protects it from going zero. As well, um, just to let you know, in 2022, we spent over a million dollars. And 2023, we spent 1.8 million. And in 2024, we spent 1.75 million. So that is what we have been using those funds for, to take care of our county needs. And largely that is Public Works, which Jeremy's sitting here. Um, and a lot of that is equipment needs that they have needed to replace for many, many years and just didn't have the fine capacity to do that. We also worked with the sheriff's department and looked at pulling them in under this program. Previously, they had been expected to maintain their building as well as purchasing any equipment like body cams, vehicles, and they had to do it in their own budget. So they were crucified many times for having such a high budget, but you have to give them some grace because these were some of the needs that they had to maintain as well. So in taking some of those costs away, it's allowed the sheriff's department to focus more on their operational needs. And their capital needs come through the C I P. We have replaced body cam equipment. We have replaced several vehicles for them. They do have some other equipment needs, uh, later down the road, which if you look at the annualized non-funded project list, you can see. I believe it's in 20, 2028, uh, along with the three patrol vehicles they've been requesting annually, we did put in the in-car camera systems and body cameras again for the 2029 year. So those are some things. Um, I did have the clerk reach out and she had some questions concerning should she transfer some of her leftover budget into C I P to have it there available for future election equipment needs. And I told her that that really wasn't the function of this fund. Um, we don't want to be tracking all these individual funds coming in. And we don't want to be pushing them over in here and then having to continue to increase our taxes in the general fund. So by letting that money sit as carryover cash, it offsets our future needs for our ad valorem taxes. And we have a set schedule of dollars that we're pushing into this fund to help build and be used and utilized towards these projects. As well, we have interest allocation that goes through there. We do have some insurance, uh, funds that go through there. So should there be something, a, a piece of equipment that's totaled, those insurance dollars would go in there. And then they would go back against the, the replacement of those vehicles. We also have purple wave, uh, cells going in there. And again, those are not being limited to what they were sold and being replaced for. Those are going back in there to replenish for all the county's needs. So this is how we're building this fund. And I did assure the clerk that those funds would be, uh, a request she could make in future years for election equipment, just like the rest of the departments, and that she didn't need to try to allocate money in there to cover it for the future. So that's just a little bit of background on that. And with that, this is the first work session in 2025. And so I've given you the information that shows you where 2024 started and where we're at based on the money that's been put into the fund as well as the expenditures that have been actually spent and the ones that are maybe still in progress or have already been approved to be spent. And then we have estimated cash that takes away the reserves. And so when you look at that, uncommitted cash for projects at the end of 2024 is 1,855,681. Now, we do push over a $500,000 transfer this month. And so that will be, it's like I have an extra zero on there, um, that will be something that is done here next, this Friday. So in addition to that 1.8, it actually will be the 2.3 million that will be available. So with that, at the end of the year, I send out a request to the department heads to update that five-year program because that's what we are using is this C I P non-funded for five years. So they update the requests in the upcoming year as well as potentially putting in something that we need to look at as a very large project. And in this case, you can see the detention building is that. We have no idea on costs. We're just really beginning this process. We have went through a study, but we do have a phase two we're doing. We need to do an operational jail study as well as, um, potentially an operational audit, depending on how this jail study comes out. So there's a lot of things we're looking at before we just jump into this, but we do know that there has to be something done with this detention building. So it is a placeholder on that sheet. And then they fill in 26, 27, 28, and 29 needs. So we have this five-year. And this is rolling because we do a work session every quarter. We want to make sure we're looking at, are we covering the needs that we have? And did something disastrous happen, like a piece of equipment was totaled and we have to replace it? So maybe it wasn't set to be replaced for two years, but we've got to pull it up because we have to have it replaced immediately. And then maybe moving something that's on the immediate list that could potentially move down. So this is something that's updated every quarter. Uh, it's not set in stone that this is what you have to do in 26, 27, 28, but more a rolling schedule to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the county. So with that, when the department sent them back over, usually the largest list comes from Public Works. And that is because really it's not Public Works, it's for all of the buildings. So they are in a position at this point where they oversee all building maintenance. So they are going and they're doing annual inspections. They're looking at the HVAC systems. They're looking at the smoke detectors. Um, they're looking at elevators, if it's applicable. They're looking, like the courthouse is having a tuck and point done right now. There's, you know, there's a lot of things that we need to do to make our buildings sound. So we do not get into what we had to deal with with the hospital and what we're working on dealing with with the jail. Um, so we're trying to avoid that as we move forward in the future. And so that is largely where Public Works list comes from. So with this, you can see the extension 4H building has one project out there requesting 35,000. Public Works has 438,000. There's four projects with that. The sheriff, technically it's three vehicles that they're requesting. It was all lumped into one project sheet, so the total's 185,000. And then the courthouse, this is actually phase two of this tuck and point. Uh, so what we did is we went out and we got some grant dollars that's going to work against this. And we also are looking at our Kansas historical tax credits to be able to use against that as well. So the Public Works Department, they do a really great job of going out and looking for any grant dollars that are available in order to keep our costs at the minimum as we possibly can. So with the requests in this first quarter, it does total 983,000. And you again can see that on that first sheet. So that you have the actual projects detailed in front of you, the dollar amount and how they ranked them. And Public Works actually went in and they ranked them by quarter even as to what they thought was most important to be considered at this time. And part of the reason that Public Works is being so diligent with this is because we've had a conversation. And as I've told you, we've been spending over a million dollars, almost 2 million a year because we're so far behind on our needs. But we've only been pushing a $500,000 transfer in there, which has been fine because we've had those monies that we put in in the beginning. But we can't sustain over a million dollars requests every year and only be moving 500,000. So one of the things that you as the commission and our governing body are going to have to consider is are we going to increase this transfer annually? Or are we going to have to work with the department heads and maybe scale back on replacing the equipment quite as quickly as we've been doing? So, um, this is something that you need to keep in mind when you're looking at what you're going to approve today. I think you need to really be looking at what's considered high priority or consider and/or consider increasing that transfer to the C I P program in the future. Something else you can consider is moving some of the carryover cash from the general fund to the C I P program. Once we've completed this 13th period, I would have finalized numbers to let you know how much that would be. We did budget just over 9 million to come in as a carryover cash into the general fund. And at this point in time, we have almost 13 million in there. So we do have some money in there, but we do still have some costs that will come out in this 13th period. So that number is not finalized at this point. One other thing I do want to bring up, and this is in some discussions with the incoming sheriff as well as the, uh, current undersheriff. So we do have the request on there for the vehicles and the new sheriff coming in really hasn't been able to sit down and look at this and know where he intends to go. Um, how he intends to continue replacing, whether he's going to continue with three a year or not. And so this is one that I think that we ought to put on hold for now until he has a better feel getting into the office and knowing what his intentions are going forward. Um, if he or the undersheriff, either one, would like to speak on that, you know, they may disagree with me and may want to give you some different information and I'm fine with that because it is their department. This is just me looking at it from an outsider's view from the sheriff's office saying, hey, can we put a hold on this because we have a new sheriff coming in? But.
Can, can I just ask, and I, this has never been shown because this is something new that we're, you know, approving though. Is there a protocol on, okay, like we drive till, um, we drive to so many miles, um, the maintenance, uh, you know, cost of a vehicle. If it's something that's costing us money, it's probably worth it to get rid of pretty quick. But is there a protocol like, oh, okay, after 150,000 miles, we get rid of the vehicle?
Because we bought them, we used to go to 150 when we bought from K H P because when we got them, they had 100,000 on them. We tried to get rid of them at 125,000. Uh, but with the COVID year that we had where we were unable to replace three of the vehicles, our mileage on our vehicles are starting to go up. We've sent, we have seen increases. Last year, we paid $86,000 in vehicle maintenance. This year, because I just paid the last bill for last year, this past week, we paid over $90,000 in maintenance and we're starting to see an increase in transmissions and motors. And, and most of those vehicles, the ones that we're having it in are the ones that have 125 or plus thousand miles on them or the K nine vehicles that have extensive idle hours on them because we had to do a motor in one of the K nine vehicles. And unfortunately, because we were waiting on, we had the vehicle here, we just could not get the vehicle built. We were waiting on K H. We had to put a motor in the other vehicle. And in about two months after we got the motor put in it, we wound up finally getting the vehicle in and built. So within three months of putting a motor in the vehicle, we had the new vehicle on the street and sent the old one to auction. So we're seeing increases.
Why wouldn't we, if you just built a motor, why wouldn't we just keep that?
But because the suspension and the transmission and the body of, I mean, because the newer vehicles, they're not built, not all of them are built on frames. You got subframes and stuff like that. And the torque and everything else, just high mileage, high use, high hours on vehicles, they just, they wear out to the point where it's, it's not cost effective.
So you need all three. I mean, it's a, uh, uh, you, you absolutely need all three. I guess that's my question.
This year, yes, because we're still playing catch up. And I still have three vehicles that we purchased last year that have not touched the road yet. Uh, we purchased three year, three vehicles last year. We picked them up in May. Uh, K can, or K Kong was awarded the bids. And they have one at their office and the other two are sitting in our parking lot right now. So we're, we're pushing higher mileage. I would say probably right now, we're looking at over 80% of our entire fleet has over 80,000 miles on it. So we're seeing the increase. I wish, uh, with some of the new accounting practices, it's a lot easier to differentiate between maintenance and other costs. So now we can break it down and I'm actually able to see those yearly costs are increasing as our vehicles are getting older.
That's why I asked. I was hoping that, that we had that in there.
Yes. And, um, I, I've been in contact with Jake. He's the fleet manager, actually, of Riley County. And he got me a program that basically it's also a thing to help with selection of vehicles. It's just because it's high mileage may not necessarily mean that it's the one to get rid of. We try to do which one is the most cost effective. Because we may have one that has 115,000, the one that has 120,000 on it, but the 115,000 is costless constant. And so he, he's gotten me a program to track the maintenance cost of each individual vehicle, which I'm implementing this January. Um, so moving forward, it's a place to start, but moving forward in years to come, we'll be able to even break down which vehicle is costing us more. And so if we have one that has higher mileage, but one that has less, but it's costing us a lot more money to keep it on the road, we go ahead and get rid of the one that's costing us more.
Exactly. Yeah, that's perfect. Yeah.
So there's something new that I, I've been in contact with him with and we're implementing it starting January this, this year. So.
Awesome.
All right. Thank you. Jeremy, is there any that you want to?
I would just say that process is the same with Public Works. With the implementation of C I C, we're able to track. With the implementation of CIC, we're able to track those costs now, where historically they weren't tracked.
Yeah. You have something good to say about CIC.
Well, coming from paper to little programs.
Yeah, well, yeah, you guys were, yeah, in the dark ages for sure. So yeah, that's nice that you're able to do that.
Do you guys have any questions? Any specific questions from the, the needs that are set in front of you?
So if I understand right, you still want to proceed with three vehicles in '25?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the things I see on here that I feel we should definitely go with are the three vehicles, the tuck and point, because we have a grant for that, so we really need to keep on with that. And then the extension. And the exterior metal, replaced windows and doors, because I think that's a high need, correct?
Yeah, it's a functional building as it is, but it is in need of some dire repairs and some upgrading, as it is not energy efficient.
I was gonna say, is it causing, that's what I'm, I was just gonna ask, it's costing us money not to have that done?
I would say it is, yes.
But you could hold off on the repaint? Rusted metal repair and repaint? Or we could potentially even look at that from a facility maintenance?
Yeah, I would say that would be fair.
Potentially?
Yeah.
Those are my four that I'd want to go with.
How about the heavy-duty truck with the snice equipment replacement? How do you, how are you looking with? I mean, you know...
On that particular unit, yeah, just coming through this snowstorm, it did have some problems, not major problems, but it is an older vehicle that does need replaced. Now, since this has been submitted, I'm talking with the shop supervisor, we do have another vehicle down there, a five-yard dump truck, that doesn't see a lot of use due to the manual transmission in it, so it's not feasible for those operations. Possibly looking at that unit, taking it, taking the bed off of it, getting a new chassis with an automatic transmission, buying some snow and ice equipment for it, and probably lower the cost from that $190.
So can we hold off and wait till the next CIP?
I would say so, yes.
Okay.
And we're gonna hold off on the repaint of the Public Works Office building? You're okay with that, Jeremy?
Yes.
And then what about that zero-turn mower, is that something that...
Kalen and I just actually spoke about that in, if commission had a pushback on that, we would look at possible purchase through building maintenance or Public Works for that, being that it's a relatively low-cost item.
Or is it even something that noxious weed? Wouldn't, don't they use the mowers too?
No, this would be more facility side of things.
Okay. So with that, we have that exterior metal and replacement windows for $200,000. We have the Extension Office roof coating, $35,000. And that, the roofs, they, those are important, because we just went under a roof program, and that makes a difference on our insurance premium. So we have an annual inspection that's being done, and then they're going to let us know any of that need-specific things done on it, so that potentially they can last as long as possible. So I would like to see us make sure and stay with those roof, anything with roof coating to get the same.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Yeah, they talked about that at KAC, and they had the KAC rep that talked about the program that we're in and how much it's going to save in, in the long run, as far as being able to maintain our roofs. So I definitely feel that that is important to do. I mean, it's always much cheaper to do preventative maintenance than reactive maintenance, so...
And that tuck and point, you have one that could actually wait till the next work session to see?
That's correct, because the actual grant for that one has not been approved.
Oh, okay.
It's February, that we will find out who has selected for that again.
Oh, okay.
So we were holding off till second quarter on that.
That way we know what our rate of cost is, and...
And that takes one off me.
And we should potentially be able to do those historical tax credits with that portion as well as the one, as soon as we're done with Phase One, I think we can go out. We actually had a company contact us that's very interested in buying those tax credits, which is great.
Oh, that's awesome. And that's gonna look so nice.
I mean, it's not a lot, we could potentially get $60-some thousand, I think it was, but still $60,000 is $60,000 that we don't tax the taxpayers, so...
And more money for our CIP.
Right.
Then I want to just point out on the Extension Office roof replacement, that is, that was identified with Stanfield through that preventative maintenance contract, and that is for the, the building over here on Ninth Street, just up from the Sheriff's Department.
So you're looking at three?
Yes, so the metal replacement windows and overhead doors, the extension roof coating, and then the three patrol vehicles. If you guys don't have any other discussion, I'll make a motion to accept those, to go forward with. I'll second that.
I'm excited to proceed with those three items. No further discussion or favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion here.
All right.
So, why don't there's increase in our transfer to CIP, when, if we did that, when would you suggest that?
So if you're, if you're open to that, then I would bring a proposal, and I'll go through and do all my analytical and see what it looks like we should be doing based on the interest that's coming in, some of that purple wave money that's come through, to determine what makes sense for dollar amount with the next year's budget. But I also would like you to consider if there's some additional carryover cash that we go ahead and move that, probably in February. I should have it finalized towards the end of February, where we could move some of that money at that point, too.
And you said there was $13 million?
There's almost $13 million, it's like 12.9, and I budgeted $9.3 as a beginning cash estimate. So we are over what we originally budgeted.
So you'll crunch the numbers and then get back to us?
Yep, probably in late February, I'll bring that for consideration now, and then the next year, when we look at budget, I'll probably increase potentially those transfers requests.
Amy, can I ask a procedural question? Of all those inputs into the CIP, is that transfer the only one that's guaranteed recurring?
At this point, yes.
Because you know the interest, but you don't know how much the purple wave could vary.
And we don't know for certain that we're going to have carryover cash, right? Because we don't know what happens. We have big snowstorms or some disastrous event where human money doesn't come in right away, we may not have funds, or we may have tapped into our reserves. So you have to look at all those factors before you consider taking it.
So that one's the only one that you know is going to help moving forward?
Right. I mean, you know there's going to be interest, you just don't have a definitive amount.
Right.
So, and we do, as you're aware, we set up the investment program, so we do have money in from these funds that is guaranteeing a more consistent amount of interest instead of the fluctuating checking account interest. So there are dollars that are in there, six months, 12 months, 18 months, 24 months, which gives us more consistency on what to expect with interest.
And more funds probably coming in because of the higher interest rates.
Yes, so for instance, our, our checking account has dropped down to around 3%, and when we did our, our CD, our certificates of deposit, we got almost 5% still. So our interest is relatively higher by doing some of these CDs.
And, you know, I, the more we do this, the more we're gonna have to be picky on what we do and don't do, and really truly look at the, the priority numbers, you know, and I know you were concerned, Courtney, because of your, you know, your, your equipment is important, so that would be a priority when it's time to come. But, but, you know, implementing a CIP program and funding a CIP are two different things. And so this is new, it's new to all of us, and, but I think it is, in the long run, going to save the taxpayers a lot more money when it comes to equipment and building maintenance. And, you know, for years, which is, you know, our Sheriff's Department is experts at law enforcement, they are not experts at building maintenance. For years, all they did was put Band-Aids on stuff until we got our Public Works involved in getting us on some kind of preventative maintenance. Of course, it's a little too late right now, and that's why we're dealing with what we're dealing with. But in the future, when we do figure out what we're going to do with that jail, having the professionals that are there to do the maintenance and preventative maintenance, where we're not ending up with $29 million in deferred maintenance, is going to be beneficial to our taxpayers.
Yeah, and the thing to keep in mind with that, too, is I don't expect us to see over a million-dollar requests every year from here until time's end. Right now, we're playing catch-up, tremendous catch-up with all the things that we kicked the can down the road. And so until we get to that point where we're caught up and we're on a system where it makes sense of turning them over so many years, we're gonna have this high dollars being requested. But once we get there, I think you're going to see the flow of it will be a lot easier on the dollar need.
Yes, for sure.
All right, thank you. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jeremy. I got a couple more compliments this weekend on you guys, so keep up the good work.
Yes, ma'am.
I know you're okay.
Can you, Jeremy, give them what the plan is, you know?
Frank was gonna reach out to her and let her know that we're actually ready to go. He needs to finish putting ceiling tiles in, so once he gets back and plays the bill, he should go and do that, please. He was gonna let her know that she could go ahead and go to his tenth street where they have all the garbage, so we're getting this cleaned out that way. When that's done, I would just say, I'm getting that one this way. Yes. Right, right, yeah, it's all, all of us decided to go there. Thank you, thank you.
But it's nice because Jamie sends them out now, so you can look at them.
On the south side of the road.
Evidently, I mean, because it was all clear, it's kind of all clear. Evidently, the wind blew across, and I mean, for about a mile there, it's solid ice.
They're out today, so...
So they, of course, I'm always driving, so, like, I went up the hill, I'm like, oh my God, I mean, it is solid.
Right, right.
So it must have blew with the wind.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure to tell them, say, so we can have everybody's back out again today, just making sure that it's wise, and any of the icy spots that may have still been there. Always appreciate you keeping your eyes on the steering wheel, personally.
I don't.
Oh.
But, I mean, if you don't want, I mean, really, unless you're the chair, you don't really get that many phone calls, but, I mean, I don't know if you want to wait, maybe you can see.
Yeah, that's why I think I told somebody about getting one, I said I thought I'd wait.
I, none of us have ever had one, I don't think, but, I mean, but if you don't want people to have to call.
I just, it was more of the emails, too, coming on, you know, stuff.
I just know, it's hard having two phones, I could barely keep track of one.
Yeah, I'm gonna wait a while.
But, yeah, we can't just order something by ourselves, it has to be in, in session.
I don't know, but she's next on the agenda.
She is next on the agenda. So you don't initially, without...
No, just on the...
Oh, okay. But on this, there's several things on here you can, to, where you... Heck no, you'd be here all day if you had to do it on every single one.
And that's a small batch?
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is a small one. But it's nice when Jamie sends them out, because you can look at it, and if there's something you want to... Keith comes in or on, on the weekends and looks at them.
There she is.
Good to have. What I'd ask for the permission review is I have a little bit of a revised indigen agreement. Josh Douglas, he signed up really early in the process, and he's been one of the attorneys. The way that his contract was, is he took a third of the conflicts from treatment misdemeanors. And so when he signed his contract, he thought it would be a little more similar to the way it was this year with the number of conflicts. But with some of the scheduling changes and things, he realized he was going to end up with way more conflicts than he bargained for. And so, since it was such a big deal this year with schedule changes and stuff, I had him just average the number of conflicts he'd been having. So none of the money changed or anything, but he's gonna lend himself to a dozen conflicts a year for 2025. So I'd recommend that we do that, because he's been helpful.
And there's no difference in...
There's no difference, it's just so he doesn't get overwhelmed with...
Sure.
...conflicts.
And it's been very challenging to find indigen attorneys.
Yeah.
Oh, you got Trish on here?
I know, he signed it before we reorganized, so, but it's just a scan of his contract, so I think that we should, he should just pencil in your name as chairman.
What'd you say his name is?
Douglas, D-O-U-G-L-A, double S, Josh.
Josh, okay. So if there's more conflicts than it doesn't, then the other ones take care of it?
So there's other attorneys, and they pay out of a different budget, but it's not a contracted service.
Oh, okay.
So they'll appoint someone.
Oh.
Okay. Wanna proceed with the title company proposes?
Sure. I sent out a letter in November to five different title companies and asked them to respond with what they would charge per parcel for the tax sale. Two of them were submitted. Said the, two of them answered and said it would be, they both wanted a hundred and twenty-five dollars per report. So those are equal. They're both local ones, collaborative title services on Chestnut. The other's J cat on Washington.
What was the first one?
Collaborative title services.
They're on East Chestnut, right next to home, or next home.
They both are equal per report. I was going to see if you have any strong feelings about either of them. Unless you do, I was gonna reach out and make a decision more based on timeline and how quickly they thought they could get it. Unless I have further, you wanted to approve one just based on the price.
Has the collaborative had any experience with taxes?
They used to be called something else. I cannot remember what they were called.
One more of them, nothing?
I don't remember.
That's one other one I can remember.
They, they were in this, they're in the same.
I can give you both the letters. They don't say anything in either room, but here's the letters I received back from both of them.
I will say from having the experience with the J cat, I think they've done a good job in a timely manner and been cognizant of the time in getting stuff done.
Okay.
And they, they, they've been, they were good to work with. You know, when are we, are you planning on, I know, how many properties were there? Hundred fifty?
Hundred fifty. We've, I think, kind of like when Mr. Opat had the last one, we've kind of kept collecting money the closer people that they are. And so I think we're probably a little off that right now. I think we're probably under one fifty at this point. But I think we're, I, I would say we're probably between one forty and one fifty right now.
I know who that is now.
Is there anything that says you couldn't split them?
Well, I think that would be.
Well, then you're gonna have one that may have, you know, it, I think it just be good to have one.
True.
Have they, did I ask that? Did they, have they, you don't know if they've had experience doing?
I don't. I don't know if they do or not. I, I know that she reached out and said, the collabora, reached out with an email and followed up towards the end of the year and said, you know, let me know if you have any questions or when you're gonna make a decision. So I'd be happy to reach out. And you guys can take it under advisement on that meeting. I don't think it's anything you have to decide today if you'd like more information. Or if you'd like them to come talk, we can put them on the agenda, too.
I think you can check into it. And like you said, the timeline might make a difference.
Okay.
And how, yeah, how many employees do they have? I know, maybe we were talking one time before, but you know, you know, once you get it and you want it back in a certain amount of time or whatever, are they able to, you know, get it done in that manner and, you know, timeframe and stuff? I think it's important when you're.
Right. And that's why I kind of wanted, because one of the people who I think had thought about putting in, said, well, they thought they'd need like close to six months.
Right. Yeah. Well, that's what, yeah.
And I said, well, I was hopeful that we could do it in less than that. And then they didn't end up submitting a bid. So I can verify that information with both of them when they get back.
Yeah, that's what I would recommend. Just see who can get on it the quickest.
Okay.
Get it, get on it and get, get it completed.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay. So next is executive session for legal matters.
Tammy needs to come in for that, because she has some information on some data security stuff. Go ahead with us. So. Will I make a motion? Whoa, you wanna go with that?
Yes.
While they're getting her, I make a motion to go into executive session for, I think we only need like ten minutes. reference legal matter for IT security with Tammy and Betsy. Oh, there she is. You can close the door.
You don't hear a sound?
All separate.
It's been a second, executive session for ten minutes to include finance and county counsel. All those members, aye?
Aye. Do you think?
Ten.
Ten for a legal matter related to cybersecurity.
Cybersecurity, yep.
Okay. You're shutting down a week.